Okay, good evening, everyone. Can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll open the meeting up to public comment. Just a quick reminder, public comment on the front end is for agenda items only, and on the back end, we'll do general discussion. So if anyone would like to come up to the podium, state your name, and you can ask a question regarding the agenda. Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to our special presentations. We have leaders of the pack this evening, so I'll ask the elementary school to come up first.
All right, so we have Adam. So Adam, I got a lot to read about you.
Can we say the last name of the student as well, please?
Casamento. Right, I pronounced it right, okay. All right, Ms. Weber, his teacher is, is, Ms. Jamal, I'm sorry. Ms. Weber's not here. Ms. Jamal is here, so she wanted to support you. But Ms. Jamal said, and Ms. Weber said, that they would like to take a moment to highlight one of the most outstanding students in her class. Every day, Adam walks into the classroom with a huge smile on his face, ready to learn and make the most of his day. His positive attitude and infectious energy truly makes him a ray of sunshine in our class. Adam is incredibly hardworking and always puts 100% effort into everything he does. Whether it's classwork or assignment, he stays focused and committed to completing his task to the best of his ability. Along with his strong work ethic, Adam is also respectful and polite to both his teachers and classmates. He constantly uses his manners and follows classroom rules and procedures, setting a great example for others. What truly makes Adam stand out is his kindness and willingness to help others. He is always ready to lend a hand to a peer in need, showing that he genuinely cares about those around him. Adam consistently does what he's supposed to do and is a wonderful role model for his classmates. Ms. Hughes said that Adam has always been such a wonderful role model in every one of his, of her classes. He is the first student to offer help to a friend or guidance on what to do. Adam's nomination for leader of the pack is well deserved. Ms. Petroschak, Adam's positivity and helpful nature make him a wonderful winner of the leader of the pack. He is responsible, respectful, and all-around great student. And Coach S. said, Adam is a terrific student in PE. He is kind, considerate with his classmates, as well as being extremely hardworking in class. So congratulations, Adam.
Now the middle school.
All right, so she's been doing a great job with these things, by the way. Come on, Fanny. All right, so Ms. Hathaway couldn't be here tonight. She had her son's, some sort of recital, you know, those types of things, but she wanted to say lots of nice things about you as well. So I'll be reading the comments tonight regarding Fanny Perez-Cortez. So here we go. She's a sixth grader at the middle school. So her teachers had a lot of amazing things to say about her, so I'll read some of them. Ms. Moreno said, in ALA class, Fanny is an outstanding writer and is eager to keep improving. She puts a lot of care into her work and is so sweet as well. Ms. Curless said, Fanny is an incredible student. She is always prepared, responsible, and eager to learn. Above all, Fanny is respectful to anyone she interacts with, whether it be lending a hand or just a smile. She is the best. Ms. Yanki said, Fanny is an incredibly bright and fun student. In music, she always asks questions and provides insights into what we are learning. Also, her determination in chorus is a beautiful example for her peers. Mr. Haas had a lot of nice things to say as well. He said, Fanny is an incredibly hardworking, conscientious student with passion for learning. She puts every effort into producing the highest quality of work for even the most mundane of tasks. She consistently perseveres through the difficulties life throws at her and comes out stronger for it. Fanny is more than deserving of this honor. Mr. Rizzi said, Fanny has a great interest in learning music and playing the clarinet. She is a fabulous musician. She works hard every single day in band rehearsal and in lessons. She is an asset to the HMS Band and is a pleasure to have in class. And lastly, Mrs. Montapurto said, Fanny is a tremendous student. She is not only hardworking, but is engaged in all, in her learning at all times. Her academic abilities are stellar, and she deserves, she serves, sorry, is a true example of an advanced math student to her peers. Congratulations, Fanny. Job well done.
Parents who welcome to take photos. And now the high school.
Good evening, everybody. I have the pleasure to introduce Basil Metz here at the high school. I'm going to read some several blurbs from his teachers here at the high school. First off, Ms. Meyer with the English department. Basil is a real leader in class, engaging with the perfect balance of seriousness and play to contribute to a positive and productive learning environment. Ms. Randolph with Health and PE. Basil is kind, courteous, and displays incredible sportsmanship during PE class. Mr. Cosellino with Science. Basil is not only a good student, but he brings joy to his classmates on a daily basis. His work ethic, positive attitude, and outgoing personality make him a role model for other students and an excellent choice for leader of the pack. Mr. Schout for Concert and Band. Basil is a vital part of the concert band. He is a leader in the brass section, playing an important role on the French horn. Basil has also been a member of the jazz band on his secondary instrument, trumpet. Congratulations, Basil, and well deserved. Mr. Welch with French. Basil is a dedicated, kind, young man. He epitomizes the personal leadership and academic qualities you would expect from a leader of the pack. It has been a pleasure to teach Basil for the last three years and to be his coach this year. I know he will do many great things in the future. Mr. Tatum with English. For the past two years, Basil has been a pleasure to teach. He brings great energy and positive attitude to the classroom. His willingness to engage and ability to have fun with all manner of subject matter to demonstrate not only his love for learning, but also his strong character and sense of school spirit. His enthusiasm is infectious, and in the brief time I've had the opportunity to work with him, he's consistently embodied all the attributes that we look for in leader of the pack. And then lastly, Coach Early. Basil is not only an amazing athlete, but an exceptional human being. His work ethic, leadership qualities, and his infectionist personality, that's twice that, you're very infectionist. It's a good trait. Will make him, will take him very far in life. Even though he drives me crazy at times, having the privilege to coach Basil these past three years have truly been a pleasure. I could not think of a more deserving person of this award. Congrats, Basil. And that's our high school leader of the pack.
Again, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations to our leader of the pack. Our next special presentation is going to be from the, I believe it's the Milton Marlborough Lions Club is going to present their annual piece poster contest awards. So if you'd like, please come up to the podium, and you can make the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Ed Bojade, president of the Marlborough-Milton Lions Club. And this is my partner in guiding Lions that we're trying to help Highland get their Lions Club starter. It's going to be called the Lloyd Lions Club. And by doing that, we're sharing some of our activities with Highland. And the current one was this fall, we had our piece poster contest. And we're going to hand out the certificates for those who participated and also the winner from Highland. Our first one, please come on up, is Callie Bishop.
Okay. Next is Ayanna Dupree. Josh Benson. Gio Dillarosa. Oh, very good. Congratulations. Reese Tucker. Kalen Decordo. Ella Perry. Zoe Hires. Great to see so many participants. Ryan White. Amelia Cogan. And the winner from Highland, Violet Zabo. Also, you have a check. We'll get that first. Thank you. And we'll get a picture.
Can I hold up your artwork?
Yeah, oh, this is Ozzy's here too, the RR teacher, so.
Homework, this is for the district. Thank you, everyone.
The presentations of the winners from each town, once Highland has their own viable club again, will go to the district, which we had a convention up in, where were we? Monticello, a month or so ago. And the Marlborough winner, for only the second time in 40-something years, won the district. That's out of 45 different towns. So it'll be interesting to see one of the Highland kids be able to go that far. Thank you.
Thank you to the Marlborough-Milton Lions Club for sponsoring the poster contest, and congratulations to all our middle school winners. Job well done. Yes, if any of our leaders of the pack and awards winners would like to go home at this point in time, I'm sure you have a lot of homework to do. You're welcome to leave. Everyone's more than welcome to move up close if you'd like. Moving on, our consent items. We're going to do our consent items from EA 1 to D. 7. And as usual, we will entertain questions, comments. Anyone wants to pull a item out to vote on it separately, we can do that. So I'll open it up to any discussion. While you're moving through it, can I have a motion to? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Any questions? All good?
I just have a quick question. On the One Risk Operations Center, is that something that's new, or do we do that each year? Is that a new merger with the four BOCs?
That's a, that's a requirement now, and so yes, it is. It's a requirement for ED 2D law, I believe it is. Is that correct, Rich?
ED Law 2D.
ED Law 2D. I always say it backwards. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miller, in regards to the surplus vehicles, are they going on a website for sale, or how they going to be? Website? We have, good luck with going on a website for pricing? Have we in the past? Good. Okay, any other questions? We have a motion by Heather, second by Tom. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? So carried.
So, Mr. President, I think we need to recognize Barbara Phillips for 28 years of service to the district. She will be retiring, and actually just retired a couple of days ago. But we will invite her back to the retirement reception in June, when we recognize all of our retirees. And we also have two new hires with us this evening. Corinne Welch is with us. She's a teacher's aide now at the elementary school. She's been with us for a number of years, working in our cafeteria, and she's been subbing for us on and off for years. So welcome to Corinne. And Megan Grossmark, sitting right behind her, is now our new school psychologist, starting in January with the departure of Mr. Path.
Okay, congratulations. Welcome aboard. All right, moving on, we have our curriculum and instruction, principal's monthly report. I'll start with the elementary school.
All right, I just have two quick additions to my board report. First and foremost, last night's concert was awesome, to say the least. I heard there was a little chaos at the end, but next year, we're going to tighten that down, the security a little bit down, but the Grinch will not be invited next year, so. But, you know, I do have to say, thank you. Thank you for tolerating the Grinch during singing, so I appreciate that. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, huge hats off to Rich and his team, as well as Pete and his team. You know, they did a lot to get our projector screen, like, kind of upgraded, and so it looks really nice at the elementary school. So I want to give a huge, huge thanks to both of them and their teams for kind of doing that and putting up with me and saying, so, thank you, guys. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Two quick additions as well. First one, I'm going to try to solicit some sales again for our PTA. So I have flyers, we're selling pies again. We did it for Thanksgiving. They were very well regarded. So I'm going to hand out a flyer to all of you, fine people, if you'd like to buy one, and anybody else. I think it's going up online tomorrow, so. Pickup is the last day before break, which is the 20th, so make sure you buy your pies. And there's also some other new things on here that look delicious. So that's one thing. The other update I have is, on the upcoming events and activities, I had two things on there for the final week, reindeer games and snowball tournament. We actually kind of combined that into one day, the last day Friday. And I have a schedule for what that day is going to look like for the kids. I don't think they've seen it yet, so, well, it doesn't really matter. You can show them. But yeah, so we have like a fun day where we do lots of fun activities. We did it last year as well. So I just wanted you all to see a sneak peek of what the last day before break looks like. And please feel free to stop by and visit if you'd like. It's always very fun. I'll pass these out once I'm done. Those are my two updates. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And the high school.
Good evening, everybody. Just a quick few updates. The first one, we had a successful trip to Canada with our world language club. I'm not going to talk too much about that, because you're going to hear about that from the first student perspective over there. Secondly, we have our annual winter concert this Thursday here at the high school in auditorium at 6:00 PM. We look forward to this annual concert, getting families together and staff together before the holiday break. And then lastly, Ms. Meyer's college writing and rhetoric class held their fourth annual reading of personal narratives at the local Barton Place in Highland yesterday night. Ms. Meyer said it was a great time for family and friends to gather and listen to students share their work while they enjoyed some food. The topics of the night included childhood, passions, sports, personal growth, and identity. And I believe she had shared some pictures and more on that perspective with Jess Murray, so that should be getting posted on our social media page soon. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, director's report. We have our directors here, so if anyone has any questions, shout them out to our directors.
I have one quick question for Pete. I know in your report, there was a mention of one of the Connex boxes, I believe, up here at the high school. Just curious, because there's a few that are down at the elementary school still. Are those still utilized? I thought we were using them during COVID. Okay. Any plan for them? Are they going to stay? They just look kind of... Okay, one at a time? Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions for our directors? Okay, thank you to all our directors. We'll move on to our student rep.
First of all, sorry about the coughing. So for the elementary school, the high school's multicultural club went down to the elementary school on November 25th to teach the students about Native American culture and history. Students constructed three-dimensional totem poles replicas, using their own art, showcasing their creativity by drawing symbols that connect to their own life. The multicultural club also taught the students about how the indigenous people utilize nature and their environment. The students showed a spirit of collaboration on their totem poles by combining each individual pole to make three big ones. One of the multicultural club members who went on that trip and did a presentation is right over there. At the middle school, the student council held a very successful food and toy drive for the holiday season. Each donated item was organized by PBAAS House. The winning house was Team Air, which gathered 48 food items and 18 toys. And the total amount of items gathered were 106 food items and 30 toys. PBAAS is also conducting a competition for the lowest amount of disciplinary referrals over the last month. The house with the fewest number of referrals. We get a free recess period on Friday as a reward for their good behavior. The students are communicating with the faculty and staff about working hard to avoid easily preventable referrals, like being late for class. The December Spirit Month is in full swing at the middle school. Sorry. Each day of the month in December is a different spirit day that allows for students and staff to express themselves in their own unique ways. Some of the spirit days were Flannel Friday, Ugly Sweater Day, Wet Out Wednesday, and Twinkle Twinkle Day, where everyone was encouraged to wear light-up clothing. The high school language students went on a trip to Canada this past weekend. The Spanish teacher, Ms. Otis, organized this trip, offering the students the opportunity to travel out of the country, many for the first time. Students enjoyed the scenery, architecture, and extremely cold weather of Montreal. They went on a tour of Old Montreal, learned about the history of colonial and indigenous settlement, and visited the Notre Dame Basilica. Students also had ample opportunity to sample the cuisine of Montreal, go shopping in the underground mall, and spend time with their friends in the country. A few, sorry, a select few Highland music students went to Area All States, a solo festival last spring, and the top students from that competition were selected to perform in Rochester for All States. Mr. Schott explained the difference to me, because I was very confused. The difference between Area All States and All States is like sectionals and sports versus states. The two students, Lena Tran and Sophia Casio, were the only two students selected from our school. They took the train up to Rochester, worked three days preparing for the concert with the best conductors from the country, and then they performed at the East the best conductors from the country, and then they performed at the Eastman Theater at Kodak Hall. Tran and Casio both gave stunning performances, representing the amazing music department we have here in Highland, as well as their own musical prowess and dedication. And that is everything. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our assistant soup for curriculum instruction, Mr. Zimmer.
Hello. I have two items to share with you this evening. First, the direct committee convened on Tuesday evening, December 3rd, in the middle school library. Principal Andy Carnwright and Assistant Principal Sarah Hathaway led an engaging discussion on equity initiatives within the middle school. Key topics included restorative recess, strategies for supporting students during reentry after suspensions, and the recent school-wide social-emotional learning day. The committee, the direct committee also previewed data currently being collected and analyzed in preparation for the district's first equity report. The next direct committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 25th, at 6:00 PM in the elementary school library. Anyone who's interested in attending, please reach out to myself or Harriet Meyer at the high school. Next, you may remember last month, I shared that we are preparing to launch our annual panorama survey, which will now be administered during the month of January. Students in grades 3 through 12 will receive support to complete the survey during school, while families will be encouraged to participate through a variety of outreach efforts, including updates on our website, social media posts, and a reminder postcard that will be mailed home in mid-January. We strongly encourage all stakeholders to participate as the feedback is invaluable in shaping future district-wide initiatives and decisions. Thank you.
Any questions for Bill? Okay, Dr. Boyd.
Good evening. I just wanna take a minute to thank Dr. Pfaff. As you saw tonight, we had his resignation. I do wanna thank him for all of his years of service and dedication to the district. He helped us out in a lot of ways, and we are gonna miss him, but we are excited that Megan will be joining us, and we're gonna be looking forward to that transition of him passing the baton to her. With that, we have already started our planning for annual reviews. We'll hold those meetings starting in probably February. They will run February through into June, so it takes a lot of planning and coordination. So we'll start that planning now, as we look at all the dates and timelines, and finding the best ways to keep our families involved in those meetings. We've had really good attendance over the last few years, so we wanna continue with that. And lastly, Mr. Barnett, Ms. Beazad, and I met with our Medicaid representative yesterday. We have biannual meetings with them to talk about specific cases, but then general updates and our progress. The system has had some glitches, so they haven't been able to process any claims, not just for us, this is everybody, since beginning of October. They were told that that's gonna be fixed soon. We're doing all the work, all of our work continues with all of our processing our paperwork, so it's just that final punch of the button, and once it gets processed. So, we'll be getting caught up, so we didn't have a good update on our numbers yet for this year, but we anticipate a continuation of about where we've been. And we did get some updates that they may be expanding some of the services and things that we do as Medicaid eligible for reimbursement, so we are looking into some of that, and they're trying to be a little more lenient on some of it, so we're looking to take advantage of that.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Boyd? Thank you. And now our superintendent?
Okay, so we did receive some good news this week from Senator Hinchey's office. We actually finally got a confirmation letter that her office will be giving $50,000 to the Highland School District from the members' coffered money. We have not seen a check, but we have gotten an official letter now, as we know that we talked about that back in May when we were going through the budget process. So the board will have to have some discussions as to what we do with that $50,000 that comes in. That is a one-time thing, so I know some members had some, some trustees had some conversations back when we were rumored to be getting that funding, so we can enter into some conversations about that either this evening or when we receive the funding in January. We are in the finishing stages of getting our new website up and running, so we have a launch date of, a tentative launch date of January 10th, where when you log on that day, the old website will be gone, the new one will be functioning, and we're hoping that it will be much more user-friendly and, you know, someplace that people can find things a little bit more easily than they currently can find them. As has been mentioned by most tonight, we had our winter concerts this week, so we had our elementary concert last night, and if you did not hear, the Grinch did show up and caused quite a stir. Knocked over some lighting, knocked into somebody, I guess the mask must have been too thick, so the Grinch couldn't see where he was going, or she, I'm not really sure who was in the costume. I have my ideas, but there is a video on our Facebook page. Take a look at that. It actually was quite entertaining. And I will say, for elementary school students to keep it together while the Grinch was roaming through the audience, bravo to them and to you, Mrs. McCaffrey, for keeping them going and singing so proudly. They did a great job last night. There was also, if you did not get to hear it, there was an adorable song about having a cold in your nose, and the best part of the night, we tell our kids all the time, "Don't wipe your nose on your sleeves." Mrs. McCaffrey allowed them to do it twice, so it was actually quite a, I hope somebody got video of that, because that was, that was great. Tomorrow night, we have our middle school concert here at the high school at 6:00 PM. Thursday night, we have our high school concert at 6:00 PM. I don't believe there'll be any weather that impacts it, but we do have a snow or slash rain ice date for early next week. We're hoping we don't need to use that. And then just looking ahead, we are gearing up for the 25-26 school year. Kindergarten registration packets are being assembled, so they will be ready for parents to pick up on January 2nd, 2025, by calling Julie Miller at 691-1032. And we got the civil rights data collection portal opened up on Monday, and so I started to attempt that process. That's gonna be a monster of a project, so I read the booklet, and they say the estimate is 216.3 hours to complete that. So, that's gonna be fun, but we have till March 7th to get that done. And then just finally, one plug for the Highland Rotary, who does so many great things for our school district. They sponsor our junior achievement program at the elementary school, and they provide scholarships to our graduating seniors every year. Their annual Super 25 raffle is underway. As a Rotary member, I have some of those tickets in my office, so if any board member would like to stop on their way out, I'll be more than happy to provide you with those tickets, or you can get to me sometime during the week. I take Venmo now, so that might be easier. And I think that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the superintendent? In regards to the member money, the $50,000 that we have gotten from Senator Hinchey, we'll hold that discussion until our next meeting and possibly during, you know, our budget cycle to see where the necessity is for those funds. I know we spoke about it during the budget cycle last season, and we did use $250,000 from fund balance, so it might be a way to replenish some of that or use it moving forward. So, we'll hold that discussion until our January meeting. Is there any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have our student use of personal technology. I know there's a lot of questions out there right now, so this will not be our first reading. I think the implementation of our policy will take effect on the second half of the school year, so hopefully we can have an approval on first reading in January and then move it forward. With the transition that's going on with the high school, I think it's best for them to settle down and then move in the direction of implementing the use of personal technology policy, okay? So, there is a policy in front of you right now. I know the superintendent sent it out to everyone prior. This incorporates a lot of the original, our current policy, and then adds the building level guidelines to it, so I'll open it up for discussion if you have questions, comments at this point in time.
I can start up, if you'd like. I think the part that we talked about was really at the end, which was added, and I think that's good. My only comment, and maybe I'll just provide a red line if that's helpful, is just the beginning part of it still has some of the existing language in, which makes it a little confusing. Like, the second paragraph talks about having PEDs during instructional time, allows students to explore new concepts, customize their learning, but really, if you read kind of that last page, we're advising that we don't use the PEDs during instructional time. So, I just think it's a little conflicting, that's my only feedback. So, if you're okay with that, I'll just provide kind of my suggestions for a red line.
Yeah, this isn't, just so you're aware, this isn't my version of the policy. This is what I got from the board that we sent off to legal. So it's still in draft form, so there's nothing, if you notice, there's nothing on the bottom that says that this is revised, because I wanted the board to give more feedback before we moved it forward, because that was a question that had come up during the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of, I agree with you, Heather. The second paragraph, instructional purposes, I think that kind of dilutes a little bit of what we're trying to establish here with, you know, the use of cell phones in the classroom. I think that kind of puts it back into the lap of the teachers, which is currently where we are right now, and I think our main goal purpose is to pull it out of the classrooms, not even to be used for instructional purposes, but to be used for their own use during their free time. So, I think we have to tweak that. I don't know where the rest of the board wants to move on discussion in that part of it, but that's my take on that second paragraph.
I was just gonna add, it's not just in the second paragraph, it's also under the instructional purposes. There's some conflicting information in there as well.
Right, so I thought, there was like two ways you can approach this. One is to, we have two existing policies right now. One that talks about the use of personal device, and one that talks about the use of a school-issued device. Other schools don't have that. They don't have those two policies. They have a school-issued device use policy that really spells out how those devices are used in school, what's not allowed, including like cell phones in instructional spaces. So, I thought we were gonna get, you know, we had looked at some other districts' policies that I thought some of us liked, and I thought that that was gonna go to legal, take out Highland, put in Beacon or Hyde Park, or whatever that one was that we were reviewing that night, and then come back for some reads, knowing that that policy would prohibit the use of cell phones in instructional spaces, that would define it a little bit. So, so this looks like an attempt to take our policy and hammer it into something that we, that will meet, or, you know, similar to what other schools have, and I think that's why it's confusing. Quite frankly, the draft tonight, three-quarters of it should be stricken, and I believe I handed out, and I didn't share it electronically, but I think I handed it out, one that where I kinda removed a lot of this language. So I don't really know, you know, we're kinda all over the place. How do we get back on the fairway?
I think, Janine, I believe you were the one that sent out the following day, and it's redlined. I don't know if Jen, yeah, it's that one there. That one strictly deals with the use, and it mirrors somewhat of Beacon's policy. That one, Mike, strictly speaks of, you know, the student's personal electronic devices, which would be the cellphone. But, we as a district have a policy for the use of school-issue technology. Don't they sign off, isn't there a permission slip that each student or parent signs off on? Is that, that's part of our policy? So, you're right, I mean, that's a separate issue compared to the use of, let's say, cell phones.
I would think if we were gonna adopt something similar to Beacon, that the two policies we have would then be repealed, and that policy would be the main policy, because it addresses...
There's clearly obsolete language in here. It's bulky, it's confusing. I mean, we make reference to modems routers and televisions being unacceptable. I haven't seen anybody carrying those around for a while, so I think we definitely can...
That's why we're discussing it.
Yeah.
So, why don't we resurrect the policy that Janine drafted and sent out to us? Review that. I believe we all have that. And then look at that and send that to legal, have them develop a draft based on that, but I think that's what we're looking to endorse, is a policy strictly dealing with cell phones, smartphones, smart watches, whatever, the personal PEDs.
I think the clarity of a very short, succinct policy is also beneficial for this.
But, Mike, your feeling is to repeal the other two and just...
Yeah, I think if, you know, if a policy is speaking to student personal cell, smartphones are not to be used in the classroom, it's very natural to identify right there what is used in the classroom, and that's the school-issued device. So, I think that if a policy does that, then it replaces the two that we have right now, you know? It's common for a policy to start out with some research, and I think that the policy, you know, A, we could just simply take that other one, but the research that we are, that we are working with is the research that these, these are disruptive to instruction, which we've talked, you know, about, the articles exist. So, you know, if we wanna put some of that as a precursor in the policy, that's fine, but I think, let's start with, let's start with Beacon and move forward, and then we'll see what's...
The only other addition I have is, on the existing policy that we have, there's a section about liability, and I do think that that's something that we might wanna consider incorporating into the other policy. It just talks about, you know, the district's responsibility and...
Go ahead, read that section out loud.
The district will be, not be responsible for any loss, damage, misuse, or theft of personal technology brought to its schools. The district maintains the right to monitor, inspect, and confiscate personal technology if the administration reasonably suspects a violation of school policy or criminal law has occurred. Additionally, the board explicitly prohibits the use of personal technology in locker rooms, restrooms, health offices, and any other areas where individuals would reasonably expect a certain level of personal privacy. I think that makes sense to include in any policy that we have.
You know, yeah, that does make sense, and I know that's in several areas, including throughout the code of conduct, so.
I think those last three paragraphs, the liability, the prohibition during state assessments, and the permission, are all ones that we would maintain. I think we'd just take out the preceding paragraphs and put those, those school-level conditionings that we discussed.
Well, yeah, Joe, I'm gonna ask probably that you, when you contact legal, to have them look at the two policies to make sure that we're not missing anything, that the board is looking to strictly establish a policy that's going to prohibit the use of cell phones in the educational learning environment.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move it to our January meeting. That will be our first reading. Prior to that, hopefully, we'll have something to send out to each board member for review so we can generate some positive discussion that evening. so we can generate some positive discussion that evening and hopefully approve it in our first reading, and then it could be implemented in the second half of the school year. All right? Under all business, review of board of education mission statement, district goals. I know we went through what our current mission statement is, what our current Board of Education goals, and what our current district goals are on our website. I know Jen, the following evening, I believe, sent out some, some Board of Education goals or district goals, combination of both for review. I have a few more that I can't kind of develop, a few here, so, and I don't know if anybody else has, but I think we have to, it's been on the website for a bunch of years, we haven't updated our mission statement. Right now, our mission statement, "We are a diverse group of individuals who strive to engage our community in providing quality education by lending our experiences, experiences, and perspectives that will positively affect the future of each and every student within the means of the community." I think we could tweak that a little bit, I think that's a little, somewhat outdated and overused. So I'd like to get something, you know, moving forward that we can possibly put back on our website sometime, maybe in February. And then the Board of Education goals, a lot of this, we've already developed a superintendent evaluation tool, I mentioned that to listeners, we already did that, conduct retreats and self-evaluations twice a year, I think that's a little over-expending ourselves doing that twice a year, so maybe we want to revisit that. Get mandated training, I know new board members have to go through mandated training. Monitor, control, micromanaging, I don't think we micromanage on this board currently. Set up long-range strategic plans for finance programs and services, I think we're pretty much on top of that. Explore different ways to engage staff, kind of a general statement there, I think we have to be a little bit more direct if we're going to want to engage staff in any way. Seek fair and cost-effective settlements to contracts, I think we've got most of our contracts in place at this point in time for the next several years at least. Deliver a budget that supports education is affordable to the public. Yeah, I think each and every year, that's one of our goals, I mean, I don't think we need it to be put in writing and put out there, I think the board as a whole, over a good number of years, have fought with what state education gives us as far as finances and tries to work around that, and that's our only means of providing a quality education is utilizing the funds that are afforded to us. District goals, achieve academic success and excellence, incorporate quality management practices in all aspects of district and board operations, build public confidence and involvement in our schools, develop and implement a five-year strategic plan that meets the faculty, transportation, educational, and administrative needs of the district. I think that one goal, we've been doing that over time with capital projects and such. I think we build public confidence and, we always ask, I always do at board meetings, to have more public involvement and even staff involvement, but it, I don't know if public and the staff want to come to the meetings, only when there's a significant uprising in the school where they, they show up and voice their opinion, but I think the board needs, you know, their input and some of their direction during the course of the whole school year. So that's where we are, our current, I know Jen put something together, I'll just read a few of the things that I threw together. Our long-term mission is to be a district that supports all our students in developing critical reasoning and literacy skills, in developing their creative ideas, athletic talents, and life skills, and awareness of their social, emotional, and physical well-being as well as for that of others. The board is committed to creating and supporting environment and culture that advocates for all students. The board is dedicated to supporting all initiatives that foster a whole student well-being and a love for learning by offering diverse courses, electives, and extracurricular activities that inspire while meeting state and federal guidelines. Support the essential academic curriculum for each grade level as set forth by New York State Guidelines while staying focused on the social, emotional needs of each child. I think with that social, emotional, I think that's the new language out there right now. Every child now coming out of COVID, staff members alike, there's a social, emotional effect on them, so. Develop a long-term plan that can be shared with all stakeholders, that develops a comprehensive roadmap to educate all children with excellence and efficiency. Those are the couple of things that I spent the last couple of weeks on putting together, so I'll send these out to everyone, and hopefully we all can put our minds together and, and come up with and establish a, possibly a new mission statement, Board of Education goals and district goals. Anyone else have any input?
I keep, my mind keeps coming back to an enrollment study, like we should really take a look at what our enrollment has done in the past 10, 15 years, and I know there's some services that can do that for us, and it does take into account local statistics, but I'd be interested to see what it plans for the next 10 years, 15 years. You know, it appears that there is growth happening, right, so we've got units being built, but it doesn't appear that they're adding students to the Highland Central School District. So, you know, we talked about the fiscal challenges last year, but we also talked about how, you know, as much as you want to maintain what you have, that's based as long as the enrollment is there to support it. We have declining enrollment, and the numbers shared by the principals in the monthly reports kind of, you know, share the same story that there's no large growth in students per se, even with all the building. So it would just be interesting to see what the data that is available lets us know what that forecast looks like, so we can plan in the future.
I, I have mentioned that, I know during our budget cycle, I think I mentioned from March of 2014 to March of 2024, our enrollment dropped 302 students. And again, we did, I'm not sure how many years ago that we did a, we had a consultant come in and do a projection for future growth in the community, and unfortunately, what they projected, and I'm going back probably more than 10 years, significant growth in the Highland Central School District. And at that point in time, we had discussion at the board level of possibly moving athletic fields up on a hill, putting a middle school out here where the athletic fields were, and moving, you know, four and five up to the middle school, and seven and eight up here, and have four, five, and six at the middle school, so. And it, we, we didn't spend a lot of money on that consultant, but it, it just didn't pan out, but I, might be the time now to resurrect that and, and have someone come in and do a study and see where the community is going to move. I know that, like you said, there's a lot of housing, there's currently, if everybody remembers the old M&amp;S Chevrolet, that has been bought, that's going to be housing and commercial, so that's going to bring in more residents to the Lloyd, I don't know if it's going to bring in children, not sure, just like the development behind Burger King with all those housing. It hasn't affected our enrollment currently, but it can, it can very well in a heartbeat, you know?
So let's have, let's charge Mr. Freer and Mr. Desmond here to find what that state-approved service is, and look at the cost so we could consider that at our next meeting or so. Because it would be great when we, in the thick of budget, to have some data.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else for any new business? Anything for the good and welfare of the district?
Okay. I did have a, a question for administration related to the high school leadership plan moving forward. I understand we're going to get some supports from Mr. Opitz, but there's some days that are not going to be covered, how can we be assured that we are supporting Mr. Opitz each and every day?
Mr. Zimmer, would you like to address? Mr. Zimmer, as the former high school principal, is in this building almost every day, so has offered those supports during the last few weeks and will continue to do so, but we also, this evening, within our substitute line, we hired an administrative sub to have on standby, she's not available all the time, but we now have an administrative sub in Deb Kelly, who was working at our elementary school after Mrs. Samuel left. She's not going to be available all the time, but that's, that's our, our plan as of right now.
We are lucky that I, that the central office is attached to the high school, and I'm here every day, and Mr. Opitz and I have been having discussions several times a day, every day in the, since the past several weeks, so I'm here to support the high school.
I appreciate that, Mr. Zimmer, and we know, you know the job, but I think, when I think of support, it comes from this end of the building, not necessarily the other end of the building, right? So when you're supporting the high school, you'll be in this main office? Listen, only because I know the work. If we're in our offices, you've got, you've got a whole other job that you're doing too, so that is going to sometimes take precedent on, you know, I just want to make sure we've got all the supports for Brandon Possible, I think everybody around the table wants that too, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, before I ask for an adjournment, this is our last meeting for 2024, our next meeting will be January 14th, I believe it is. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. Enjoy the holidays with family and friends, and we'll see you January of 2025. I will do that. You did that pretty good. And now open it up to public comment for general items. Okay, we'll close public comment, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Janine, second by Jen. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you, everyone.